It's forty-two cents covered. Right now, yeah.
Good morning, everyone. It is nine AM. I am going to call the meeting of the Cuddington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and Commissioner Johnson, would you lead us this morning, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to freedom of liberty, which expands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that. Item number two, call for public comment. We will still take calls from the public on items that are not on the agenda for information only. The two phone numbers are six zero five eight eight two six two nine seven. Or six oh five eight eight two six two four eight, and we will address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners?
No.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Is there any old business? Any old business that we need to take up? All right. Item number seven, action to adjourn CNA DA.
So moved.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. We adjourn. And item number eight, nominations and action to elect a chairman and vice chairman for two thousand and twenty-two. Cindy, you will take this over since no one is seated at this point.
All right. So now is the time to make a nomination for the chair for two thousand and twenty-two. The floor is now open for nominations.
Oh, nominate Brenda Hammond.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
Oh.
Are there any other nominations? I got a call for two times. Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to that we cast your name and spell it.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Nominations are finished and Commissioner Hampton will now take nominations for vice chair.
All right. With that, then, I will look for a nomination in a second for vice chair.
I'm sure I would like to nominate Commissioner Gable.
Okay. Motion by Van Duzen. Do we have any other nominations?
Or do we have to take a second first, or we just ask three times?
Okay. All right. Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? All right. I would look for a motion then to nominations to cease and cast unanimous ballot.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Waterman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. All right. Commissioner Gable is now seated as vice chair. All right. Let's move on then to item number nine, monthly reports, extension. Have you heard anything?
I have not.
Okay. We'll move on then to veteran service office with Todd.
Morning, Todd.
Good morning, Todd. And you did have some.
Good morning, everybody. Congratulations on chairman and vice chairman.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't really have a whole lot this month here. Not saying that it hasn't been a busy month, but things kind of wind down this time of year, it seems like. So most of those, the local organizations have kind of held off on a few things. Couple of them don't even have meetings this time of year because of people going south and stuff like that. So I would imagine things will pick back up a little bit. Again, in February and March, because they'll start doing their elections and stuff like that. So those are pretty quiet there. Three DAV transports for December. We currently have zero for January. Still no delivery date, but I sent an email right after I sent this off and to the state DAV. And the DAV national headquarters that the van is getting the graphics installed this week. And once it arrives at the DAV national headquarters, it will be inspected. They will contact the Sioux Falls VA Medical Center to start making arrangements to get it picked up and transferred here. So that's a, that's a positive for us.
Getting closer.
Yeah. Again, other than that, I'm going to keep working with the Cuddington County Vets Council. That pro, or that, that council was started several years ago. We're going to try to put some basic guidelines and some stuff like that. Nothing too drastic, greenhouse like that. But you know, the Cuddington County vets, they're the ones that oversee the and manage the, they don't manage it, but they're the ones that provide the funds for the Veterans Emergency Fund at the Salvation Army. So, and we've kind of done the guidelines on that, policy letter on that. So that's kind of what we're just getting a few, just a little bit of basic information down on paper. So when somebody else comes into a position or something like that, at least you have a starting guidelines and stuff like that. But other than that, unless there's any questions.
I imagine this delivery date is a little ways out and you don't probably have all the specifics. Will you need to fly somewhere, pick it up, or travel somewhere to get it, or?
You know, I was told that they did a couple of years, this last year, when they got it, the last time they got them, they, they had them shipped up here. Instead of sending people down to pick them up down in, I believe it's in Tennessee is where the national, they just shipped them up here to Sioux Falls and then they went down and picked them up from there. But when I, when we do get it, I will try to do, I'm going to try to do a little public event and stuff like that. Yes, we have.
We did?
We did. We did. I put it in my budget last year.
I know. I was worried about the budget. Okay. All right.
It's just been a lot. We actually paid last March for it.
Okay. Yeah. Now I can see that. All right. And I wanted to make sure we weren't, okay.
Should be good. So.
Thank you.
That would have been something unexpected.
When we do get that, though, we will have to decide what we're going to do with the other explorer. And I have reached out to a couple of those other counties and they have never shown interest in them and stuff. So.
It's a nice vehicle, yeah.
You know, it is. It's got a hundred and, it's probably got about a hundred and seventy thousand. It needs another oil change. One of the lights on the speedometer doesn't work, but instead of putting any more additional money into it, I've been trying to get it by, so from that standpoint, but it's got good tires.
There may be another department that can use it.
That's what I wonder, even within the county.
At the park or park or someplace like that.
Didn't we investigate that last time with, we got this current van and there was, didn't seem to be a lot of interest.
Well, I think their biggest issues is the same as drivers, getting somebody to take them.
But there might be a change of heart.
Yep. Nope. Okay. Have a great day.
Yeah, you too. Thank you. Yep. Good morning, Jody. We'll take your report now. I'll give you a few minutes to. Yeah. Well, it's been.
Hi, Jody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good time.
Yeah.
All right, all the stop signs and everything. All right. Well, good morning. Here we are, two thousand and twenty-two, and it's just going to kick in. My January calendar is full. So we're busy planning for the Farm Show Lunch Counter. Farm Show is February ninth through the twelfth. I have three great volunteers helping lead it. They've helped in the last two years. So we will need more volunteers this year because we'll have more than just one lunch counter this year as in the past last year. So. Right. We're going to be hopefully back to normal on it. So, so we hope that works out well. I do have clover buds this week in Florence, and then the week of January seventeenth, I'll have Waverly and Watertown. Forage BB gun begins tonight in the Sealing, pending, I don't know what's happening with this weather tonight. So the BB gun is full. And so forage air pistol and air rifle will begin on Thursday night, and then forage archery begins next week. So Tuesdays and Thursdays till April are booked for my life. So.
What's your max on them?
Well, we have about twelve to fourteen each shift because still kind of, still spacing and everything, you know, and stuff. I'm still sticking with a little bit of COVID regulations, but masks are optional. They don't have to wear them, but we're not going to hinder them if they wear them either. So I'm working with the Northeast Forage Advisors for some regional forage programming such as kid care and a teen program. So with our vision two thousand and twenty-five, we talked about more regional things happening together to get kids working together and things too from across this corner of the state. So we're working on that already. So we've submitted some grants to the South Dakota Forage Leaders Association. So we will see how those come out. And each county this year was supposed to commit, put together a snapshot. And so this is our Cuddington County snapshot. So, so we're focusing on social skills, life skills, workforce development, and leadership development. And we had to put things that are happening in our county under each skill set there. So those are the things we put. We do have some numbers there. And I told Dr. Tanner, I don't really like the number of youth served here because it's not comparable to other years because we couldn't hold a lot of things that we used to hold. So, so hopefully the nine percent will change. And he's like, don't look at that because of these are COVID numbers. You can't go by that. It'll increase from there. So of course, your names are in here too. So on the bottom, I'd like to thank our commissioners and for all your support on there too. So this kind of goes through what we've, kind of a snapshot of what we did last year and from October till end of September of two thousand and twenty-one. So.
Enrollment is kind of long, though.
Yeah, I think so. And we are like, the forage projects are continuing at, the monthly forage at home projects are continuing. And last month, we had forty-nine kits go out. So looking, waiting till the end of January twentieth for our next.
This is a nice, nice summary is, where would people, if the public wants to see this, where would they get this?
Well, we can put it on our, it's just you, the leaders have seen it and you have seen it. So that's the most of you, because we had, I did talk with my director at my evaluation about it. So I wanted to make sure it was all correct and everything was ready to go. So I can put some up here if you want to somewhere. And we'll have some at our office. And we do have, we have our website underneath, like CuddingtonCounty.org. So.
PDF or something.
And it is in a PDF. So. And for new families coming in and wondering about forage, this kind of gives a little snapshot of what kids have done in the past. So.
Lot of good information in here.
Yeah.
Do they not want to put names on the kids?
I didn't. Some, I have to get approval for them to even want to be anywhere. So.
I figured there was a stipulation.
Yeah, for photos. Yeah. For release forms and stuff. So.
Yeah. Thank you for this. This is nice.
Yeah. Any questions? It's, I don't know, Farm Show is going to hit fast because it just seems like the months fly. So.
Yeah, especially when you're so busy.
Yeah.
Tuesday, Thursday with all your shooting sports.
Yeah. Well, yeah. So I was watching the weather last night to see when it's going to kick in tonight.
Farm show is a month away.
Yeah, we have to get orders in sooner because the guy with the papers and stuff, she's already came in because supplies. And even the grocery stores have talked about supply and what they're going to be able to supply us with too. So it's kind of, you know, I guess.
It's going to be a challenge.
So we'll see how that goes.
Thank you, Jory.
You bet.
Thanks, Jody.
All right. Let's move on then to item number ten, action to designate legal papers for Cuddington County publication. Cindy, if you'd want to just.
Meanwhile, we are required to publish in legal newspapers within the county. In Cuddington County, that is, those are the South Shore concept. And I believe it's still called Watertown Public opinion.
Right. Motion.
Move through.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. What is the criteria that they have to meet in order that they would be the legal?
Yeah, there's a statute on there. I don't know right offhand. I know we do know that, that the South Shore does qualify.
Yeah, I know there's a certain number or something because.
Subscriptions they have to sell. And they do, they do meet the criteria.
Okay. With that, any other questions?
The code is seven dash eighteen dash three.
Okay. Well, I know there's, there was some discussion at our county commission convention about start dates, or you know, like when you publish something in the paper and if it's a weekly or a daily, you know, what date do you use for start dates? Like, well, we have one that's daily and one's weekly.
We have to coordinate those dates to, like for bid lettings and anything like those, public hearing.
So is it the first date or is the last date of your start date? That's the question.
I would say it's the last date.
That's kind of what it's.
Timeline starts.
So for weeklys, say, do you publish all of the stuff, the agendas, the minutes, everything goes into weekly ones as well?
The week, yep, the weekly, not the agendas. I, I send it to them so they know.
But it's hard, yeah, just the timing.
And I don't publish the agenda in the public opinion either. I just send it to them before the meeting. The only thing I publish are the minutes.
Okay.
The minutes, notice as a public hearing, notice of bid letting, anything.
But all that still goes into a weekly? Just like, okay.
Like the agenda is, it's only twenty-four hours and then put it on the front doors, basically.
It's on the website. It's on the doors to the courthouse.
I know there was some talk about doing all of this online. And.
They probably will again.
And yeah, it probably will come up again, but in defense of the, the, the hard copies, the newspaper, it's, a lot of people do read that. In fact, I talked to a lot of people that that should literally read it out as public notices, because that's going to be basically what it is. So I can understand that too. A lot of people don't have access to the internet. So.
Yeah. State law requires three legal newspapers unless there isn't three, and then it's many newspapers that are within the jurisdiction.
So it's not about a number then? It's just whichever ones are in the jurisdiction?
No more than two newspapers within the same municipality may be designated as official newspapers by the county if there are other legal newspapers published elsewhere within the county. Yeah.
So it's not about a number? It's just how many are there?
No, there is, there is a legal requirement too, that, I mean, like each newspaper does have to qualify as a legal publication. It's probably a different law.
Yeah, this does not explain the definition of a legal newspaper, just designation, that law that she gave.
So the most you could have is three then, but we don't have that. All right. We ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item number eleven. This is always fun every year. Action to set commissioner salaries for two thousand and twenty-two. If we all recall.
Well, I, I know that we always debate this issue every year. It comes around and they always say, well, but I think two, three, four years ago, I don't know how many years ago it was, we decided that to take the issue out of debate, we just increased our salary the same as we increased the employee salaries. And that would be this year, one point seven five. And so that's what I would go and make motion. So moved.
All right. Motion by Johnson. Do you have a second to that motion?
Everybody hesitates, but we've been doing the same thing for a number of years, longer than I've been in here. I'm sure when Laverne was here, yeah. And it's always been the same.
You fall behind.
Yep. And you don't want to fall behind, so you keep everything even. And I would second that motion.
All right. We have a second to that motion. Is there any other discussion? We ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
You also have the option to in the past years, you have made a motion to provide an additional one hundred per month for the chair for all the duties. So if you so wish, you can do that at this time also.
So moved.
Motion by Waterman. Second by Gable. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. All right. Item number twelve. I think we're going to move this down to the end. We'll kind of take care of some of these other things first. So with that, item number thirteen, action to set compensation for the coroner. So currently, well, I'll let you do the intro, Cindy, I guess you.
Currently, per action you took last year, you increased the coroner rate for each case to a hundred and seventy-five dollars per case plus mileage from a hundred and seventy-five plus mileage to two hundred plus mileage. Current mileage rate is forty-two cents for elected officials. So currently, every time the coroner gets called out, he gets two hundred dollars for attending an unattended doubt.
Coroner's office is, is, I'm the liaison for that office, and I was contacted by the county coroner, Terry Sorensen. We spoke a little bit about that compensation, and he has a little bit of a concern about the fuel costs that are associated with this. He did not know that he could put in for mileage, so he hasn't been. So, and as we all know, fuel is continuing to go up. So I'm going to make a motion that we increase that salary from two hundred up to two hundred and fifty dollars and then leave the, the fuel costs, which I believe are set by the state anyways, Cindy, at forty-two cents a mile. So that would be my, my motion, two hundred to two fifty.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
I did have a question, though. So to see, so if he's, I'm just, you know, I want to talk about it. That's why I seconded it, but I'm still not quite sure the since he hasn't been putting in for mileage, if he knew, he, he just was unaware of that. And then apparently, and I mean, does that?
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure why he hasn't been, but he hasn't been up to this point. I don't think that that really, I think, just like the other salaries in the county that have gone up, I think we probably owe it to our coroner as well. He's, he's done a lot since he's been coroner, and he's continuing to do more, and it's not going to go away. So.
I know. It's not, it's a, it's not, it's not what people, it's not a simple, it's not a simple thing, what people.
So.
I wonder.
But I, but I did encourage him to fill out those vouchers for the fuel cost. So I'll be doing that from now on.
I wonder if his budget would reflect that increase. Do you know that, Troy, in his budget for the coming year?
Well, the thing is, I mean, there's mileage and that, and that, and the mileage, the mileage rate, it's what, forty-two cents a mile or something. That seldom changes regardless of fuel cost. So that's something, you know, something we need to be aware of. So.
That's been set for years.
Yeah, we can't do much with that, but he can't put in for it, so that would help.
Different, just to phrase some of those expenses, especially.
Does anyone else have any? Well, it does look like he did increase the wage and salary from ninety-five to twenty.
Correct.
So.
I, what are you, what are you saying, Brenda?
So for the current year, he had.
This twenty-one.
For twenty twenty-one, he had wage and salary of thirteen, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-one cents. That is what we actually paid him for wage and salary in twenty twenty-one. He did budget twenty-two thousand for twenty-two.
He did.
Yeah.
So that request would absorb.
Yep.
That. Okay.
Oh, this was mid-year. That's why.
Right. Your reports are mid-year, mine are up to date. Yes.
Okay.
So, but yeah, he did budget twenty thousand this year. So.
Yeah, he increased the budget quite a bit because it, frankly, it needed some updates. Yeah.
Okay. Well, he probably compensated for that. Maybe that's the number he threw out to you knowing what he budgeted? No? Okay.
No. That's a number that I thought would be fair. So.
There we go.
And we'll have further discussions as we go into this next year.
Right. See where the fuel costs. Now that he knows he can get, be compensated for that. So, all right. Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote?
We need a motion first.
We do. We have a motion.
Oh, you made the.
Yeah. And then.
Please second.
Please second it. So are we ready? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries. All right. Item number fourteen, action to approve the list of employee cellphone stipends.
So cellphone stipends are now based on an employee's pay classification. And then these are the people who department heads have submitted that they would like them to receive cellphone stipends. The only change to the list you're looking at is that Larry Howard will come off and Jamie Torstensen will go on. He will be doing on-call such as Larry Howard did previously. So.
Right. Did Jamie call in and verify that yet, or has that been verified for sure?
Just got word yesterday to add him.
Okay.
So I'm not sure. It came from, it came from the emergency manager office. So.
All right. Very good then. So with that addition then. All right. So I would look for a motion in a second on this. Motion by Gable?
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Do we have any more questions, comments?
Just, I know we've talked about this in the past and tried to get this straight. We did have this looked at in our compensation study. And it turned out, we, we were afraid we were being a little overly generous with this, but as far as, you know, comparing to other similar jurisdictions, similar kinds of employment, we're pretty much in the market, so to speak, with this particular benefit.
All right. Anyone else have anything they want to add? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item number fifteen, action to approve bank depositories for two thousand and twenty-two and authorized warrant signers. Some information is in your packet, but Cindy?
The treasurer is designated for Liah Bank Dakota as to be used for the checking and depositing of cash. And the following banks are authorized to sell account certificates of deposit and for investments at competition bids, and they are American Bank Trust, Dakota Bank, First Bank and Trust, First Premier Bank, Great Western Bank, Midwest Bank, Plains Commerce Bank, Relia Bank Dakota, again, South Dakota Fit, and Wells Fargo. And then the authorized signers on the, wrote Liah Bank. For Live Bank checking account are staff from the auditor's office, auditor's office and treasurer's office.
Move to approve as recommended on the handout.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable, any questions or comments? Hearing any, all in favor say aye. Pose that motion carries. All right, item number sixteen, action to approve a notice to bidders for annual highway supplies and weed chemicals, and Rick is here this morning, so. Come up and.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is our yearly supplies for concrete pipes, corrugated pipe, bridge lumber. Diesel, ethanol, liquid asphalt, P rock, gravel, asphalt patching material, and then weed, uh Steve's weed. And this year I had riprap to this list. Because we bought a tremendous amount of riprap over the last three years, so I thought I'd put it on there. And uh, see if we can get some of these, I don't look for a bid. We may, but. Metal pipes last year, so we'll see what happens.
Cause they pulled their bid basically, right?
Yes.
So yeah, it'll be interesting.
Yep, I'm just gonna make a motion to uh approve this notice to bidders.
Second.
Okay, motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Pose that motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
All right, um. Now, item number seventeen, discussion, possible action to prove updates to employees' personnel policy and procedure handbook. And Natalie, if you would come forward and we'll have some discussion on that.
Did, did you want me to show anything? Which, which, which?
Good morning commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
Handbooks are favorite topic of discussion, I know, this is very exciting for you today, sorry, first, first meeting of the new year. Um, so we have a number of things that to go through for suggestions for updates that have just been going on over a period of time, it's nice to. Get a bunch knocked out at once, and so, um. You may not have it printed, Lee can pull it up on the screen here and we can talk through the sections, um. So the first one is page twenty-two, Lee, on political activity policy. I know.
So you need a hyper.
Sorry. Yeah.
What is the number on that?
So it is three point two.
Okay, cause this book is a little different, okay, nice.
So this was something that has come up that um other counties, I've talked to um Todd K's with first district. He provided this recommended language, this was something that other counties have added in. And so basically, it's just saying that if you run for and are elected, so it's that. Bottom section is the only thing we're changing there, we're adding that paragraph. If you run for and are elected to an elected partisan office, then you would need to resign as an employee of Cottington County. So you could obviously be in, you know, anything that's not partisan, so you could still serve on the school board or whatever. Um, as an employee, but if you are in a partisan elected office, then you can't continue to be an employee. Cause of the conflict of interest, I believe.
Would apply pretty much to county offices and state offices.
Yes. Yeah, good point.
And you would, you understand the conflict of interest, that's kind of what we're trying to avoid there.
Right, yes, right.
You'd be recusing yourself a lot about it.
So that's the language, does it may have any other questions on that or comments?
I have, I have a question, was that a township?
I don't think you run as a, you don't run as a partisan position for those, right, you don't run as a Democrat or Republican, so no, that would not include that then.
I didn't think so.
Or mayors, I don't think that would include.
Would include.
Could be like sheriff, for example.
Yes.
County officers, state, state officers, um.
And the board here, you know, if you are running for a commission board seat.
I asked because when I came aboard the commission, I was on township board forever.
Yeah.
And some of the commissioners that were sitting at that time said that I couldn't serve as a commissioner and on the township board. Which was all right with me, because you either have to die or move to get off the township board, and this was my own, so, but I did, uh. But I didn't think that legally I had to get off, but uh, just so people understand that.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes it's just public perception.
Yeah, and, and the point was that, you know, we deal with the townships here, you know, all the time, you know, and so there is some. It's like nine-one-one.
Yep.
That might be something we want to think about in the future, actually, that, that particular issue, I hadn't thought about that, even though townships aren't partisan, but that might be something to think about.
To add and down the road.
But that, that'd be more a township supervisor commissioner thing, not necessarily, not necessarily about employees.
Not if you're just a general employee, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so moving on then, um, next is, um, it's on page twenty-eight, it's not in. The current manual at all, um, it's a section added about employee use of county vehicles. And this actually came up um as a result of your last audit from South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. And so I will just read from what they said and then we can talk about this, um. So they said their recommend, one of their recommendations off of the audit was, it is recommended that a policy be developed that prohibits non-employees. From riding in an entity-owned vehicle slash equipment without first having them sign a waiver. If the non-employee is a minor, then a parent or legal guardian must sign it. So, and they, so that was what they said, then there was some additional follow-up, of course, I didn't print that email. Um, Brenda, do you have that, do you want to, if you want to read the whole thing, that was kind of long, but.
Right.
We could.
Or I'll let you read it.
Yeah, I can do that. That's okay, there's a lot.
I'll find it.
Let's see, what page, do you have a page number?
Uh, twenty-eight.
Is that under a section?
It's gonna be added to, it's gonna be three point one seven, so it's gonna be added right at the end there.
All right. I don't know if that's the best place to remember, I didn't want to renumber. Okay. I think that maybe is the one you're looking at.
Okay, so this was from, this email was from. Tracy Iverson, who is a loss control consultant with safety benefits. Okay, so then, all right, she says, in the interim response to your inquiry about the use of county-owned vehicles being used to transport non-employees. Safety benefits provide safety and loss control services on behalf of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. Below you will find comments from both the SDPAA and the SBI regarding your question about the use of emergency vehicles to transport minors. Comments from South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance regarding liability concerns slash coverage. For a ride along where there is a non-employee riding with a county employee to see what they do, most common in law enforcement. The SDPAA recommends a waiver, which includes a confidential agree, confidentiality agreement, as well as proper training and personal protective equipment. For the situation described below, first and foremost, SDPAA recommends the county-established policy language clearly stating whether or not the county allows such activities. The SDPAA does not recommend that law enforcement officers use emergency response vehicles to transport children to school, et cetera. When they are on duty or would be expected to respond to an emergency call, the reason for this, if the officer is expected to respond to emergency calls and is on his or her way to. To or from school with a child, how do you address the non-employee passenger? If the officer takes a child with, there is a heightened risk of accident or injury to the child. If the officer delays response to the emergency call due to transporting a child, there is risk that a third party would file a claim for failure to respond. If the officer drops a child off mid-trip and something happens, will the family pursue a claim against the county? A cop, a policy prohibiting use of emergency response vehicles for personal use such as that described above is recommended to avoid the additional liability exposure. If the county does adopt, opt to allow the practice, then da-da-da-da-da, potential claims stemming blah blah blah. Use of waivers, um, written policies, documented training in the policies, use of waivers. To waive potential claims stemming from accident or injury arising out of the transport of the minor children are recommended. Um, yeah, so there's some additional like stuff on there, but basically that's what they said. And so the question is like whether you want, so we need to add language definitely about this, we don't have anything in the policy currently. Um, but then the question becomes, do you want to say, you know, it's discouraged or it's prohibited? It's kind of where you're at too, okay, and I think the most recent draft has prohibited.
So with that, so that's just, we're talking about emergency vehicles, so what about non-emergency vehicles, you know, if people are going to conferences or something like that?
It would be the same in all cases, I think.
Okay, so we're not gonna.
If they're going to a conference, that's for county business, right, so if they sign a waiver. And they're participating in county business, that's different than taking a kid to school.
Right, so, so that, in that instance, you'd be okay because it's a non-emergency vehicle at that point.
I don't know that, I mean, if you're gonna prohibit it, in some cases, I think you'd want to prohibit it at all. Unless you make exceptions for a waiver for some reason, but I don't think you want to say, well, it's okay here, but it's not okay.
Well, I guess in, in that instance, you can take your personal vehicle and get compensated for mileage, so then that issue, so maybe.
If you need to go to a conference and you need to take a kid with you, or your spouse, or your spouse, because then drive your personal vehicle, not the county vehicle.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sure, I think Rick had something to say about.
Will this include all people, you know, cause sometimes I have engineers, farmers. Other people that I meet out on the road to look at things in my vehicle.
Well, the way, way the language says, unless there's a legitimate business reading, reason for providing transportation, so if you've got an engineer with you, I think that's pretty clear. That's a business use.
That's county business, yeah, no.
Yeah, good question.
Every once in a while, I pick up a farmer, go and look at something.
Yeah.
Or someone else, so.
Yeah, as long as it's business-related. That would be, so that, yeah, the language currently has a waiver signature section.
The way it work, the way it's worded, yeah, even, even if it's so for business reasons, you would, you would think if it was a business reason, don't even think about it.
Right, so we need. Yeah.
Liability reasons, liability issues.
Right.
Develop a form.
Yeah, and SDPAA has one in here.
So then he need, Rick would need to have those forms, just have him sign it if they're gonna hop in his vehicle.
I would just, yeah, like carry this with you in your vehicle, I guess. Mm-hmm.
I would guess, if that's what, if that's what insurance is saying, then.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Good question.
Should be an entry and exit form, so you've got when, when you go, when you were entered a vehicle and when you were disaparted.
It's probably just.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to keep a log necessarily.
It should be, it should be in a log. Doesn't happen that often, it won't be that big of a log.
What would be the importance for that?
That would be a recorder of John Doe was in county vehicle number such.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna limit your liability though, if something happens to you, I think. I think we need to put that verbiage in that second paragraph if we're gonna not require a liability waiver. To be signed if they're in a county vehicle doing county business, because it doesn't say that currently.
Insurance is saying we should, yeah.
Okay.
So, so.
So if he just has, we won't, you don't, I don't feel the need to log when they get in, when they get out, if they sign that waiver, it just simply states they're in that vehicle. And when they get out, it's done. Yeah, it's, I'm sure there's.
Yeah, this is, I can pass this around, I mean, we can modify this to what we want, but that was what was included with the audit.
It has.
So would that be an appendix to the?
Yes.
As it's a quick form, because like in Rick's situation where he's picking up a farmer to go look at a covert or something like that, you don't have to go over a fifth. He can walk.
Well, but it's for their protection in a liability case, so that for the county being sued at some point, so.
Yeah, even if it's not an emergency response, I mean, I think the idea is you could get in an accident at any time, I mean, that's what we call an accidents, right? You don't know what might happen.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so I will. Add the form as an appendix to the rest of the language, look correct, or any questions or changes?
Then Rick, in your case, you could just keep a stack of those in your vehicle and hand it to them when they get in.
You too, yeah, any of them, with the updates, anyone who would be in that situation.
So the, the, those two apply to law enforcement, obviously, they can't.
That's, that's part of it, yeah, so that last sentence, if that looks right, um.
An inmate probably isn't gonna sign a waiver.
He doesn't want to write anyways.
Yeah, I don't.
Are you transporting them? If you transport them, sign the waiver.
I would say, yeah, anytime.
If they're just sitting in your vehicle, I would say no, but if they're transporting, I would say sign the waiver.
If they're, if they're can't sign a waiver, they should, they need emergency services.
Right, yeah, I mean, otherwise call the ambulance, yeah.
Yeah.
If they're just sitting there waiting for an ambulance to come or something like that, you wouldn't need to, it's just if you're gonna move and move somewhere. Yeah. All right.
Yeah, so the last sentence addresses the sheriff's department, is that the right wording?
I, I just wanted, I was just pointing that out, so people understand, yeah, that we're not trying to.
I don't know if there's a different word for them, I'm like inmate, defendant, felon, or what else do we call them?
Suspects.
Suspects, maybe? Person in custody, okay.
I'm gonna change it to.
Yeah.
Because that could, that could include just transports now.
Yeah, I was trying to cover all scenarios, but then I didn't know the right word, so.
Well, like, if you're taking them to court.
You included everything, so you had everything covered. Well, we also have transport inmates to other clinics.
Exactly, yeah. So you can probably take up that, et cetera, then lead to.
Right, because they're in our custody, so.
Okay, all right, so anything else on that section then? I told you this would be fun, guys, okay, moving right along then, um. Page thirty, under regular part-time employee, so we talked about this, um. The language is confusing, the way the policy is currently written, and so the intention is not, I believe. That part-time employees should be provided health, life and dental insurance, but it had this option to participate. And then if you go to the page that talks about this, um, sorry, Lee, the benefit section. Um, I'm trying to get there, sorry. Um, page forty-seven, so it kind of goes, these two kind of go together. There, so then under this, it also said regular full-time and regular part-time employees are eligible, blah 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 blah. So it was just not clear, um, so again, if, if that's the intention is that part-time staff would not receive those. And I think we just need to remove these. There was a question about whether or not we could provide, if we wanted to, like. Back basically our part-time employees back to the option to be added to our policy, like at no cost to the county, like can you just add on? So I did talk to Ray France about our insurance on that, and if we don't, Sanford requires, because it's Sanford policy. That the county would contribute at least fifty percent to the premium, or they cannot come on the policy, that's a Sanford requirement. Um, I did talk to Delta Dental about the dental part, they don't have a requirement, so we could still offer it to them at no cost to the county.
So they could maybe get vision, and dental just not help.
I don't know about vision, I didn't talk about that.
It's completely employee-paid.
Oh, yeah.
But dental is covered by the county for full-time.
Yeah.
Yep, the county pays a hundred percent of the single premium.
So it sounds like the only benefit would be the dental insurance and that they'd be able to.
If you want to say that they'd have the option to come on to that. At their own cost. So we could change that if you wanted to that, but I don't have a problem with that, I guess.
It's all, I mean, it's basically a cost of the county.
Right.
So.
Okay, okay, so originally thirty, sorry.
What about retirement?
They have to by the state.
Any employee who.
Has to hit the twenty hours, right?
Hours.
That's a requirement in the state, right?
Right, but less than forty, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I didn't change anything with that.
Continue, on a continuous basis, like some of our, some of our correctional officers might work forty hours one week and ten the next.
Right.
Threshold of so many.
And this is back to.
Consistently twenty hours per week.
And this is back to that we really. And this is back to that we really should do an audit, you know, and a look back period and say, okay, how did things turn out last year, you know, for those people that are supposed to be part-time? Did, what did they average for hours? And if they average twenty, then they should be added on if they're going to continue to be that way.
But if it's average twenty over the whole year, maybe it wasn't succession, so it shows that.
Not at the end of the year. South Dakota Retirement will have their own set of rules, I just don't know for sure.
But because if they, you can't really do an average, because that that way, maybe they work twenty like this month or not, you know, this week or whatever. But it will average to twenty, but in essence, it wasn't consistently twenty.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to follow up with South Dakota Retirement, I think the idea is also that you can't just say, well, they're not working twenty and then they really are.
We would have to get a. But yeah, I don't know that you could do an average, because that's not really a true story either, exactly. It will look that way, but maybe it wasn't consistent, that's where we gotta figure it out.
But an average is an average.
So, so do you wanna modify this? Do we need to modify this like for?
Yes, please, go ahead, so on the dentals, then option to participate at, leave that, but say add employees' expense or add employees' costs, however you wanna word that.
So that I had noted that no cost to the county?
At employees' cost or something like that? I would rather word it that there is a cost to the employee.
Specifically the employee's cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is specifically.
Otherwise, they'd be like, well, who's paying it then?
Right, they're, right.
Employees, employees' responsibility or something like that.
Does that work?
At employee expense, yep.
Yeah.
So then now go back down to thirty.
Do you wanna add, say, vision or just kind of?
We don't know what that is, I guess, at this point.
Well, we could add it, because it's the same thing, it's at their, they have the option at their expense, right?
If the vision company.
It's available.
Sign up, right, what about health and life, are we taking that completely out?
So health has to go completely away, because they can't be there, and I don't think life either, although I don't know that I talked to our carrier.
We can, we can just, you can talk to them, we can always change that later, just leave it alone for now.
Yeah.
Okay, so I take a look at what it's, what's on this, I just added a line for vision, like this.
Yep, yep, I think that looks right.
Have a lot of people picking that up, because they're not making that much to start with, so, yeah.
Right.
But they maybe would get a discounted rate, like with the demo or whatever, if they're part of the group, you know, they gotta pay for it, but if they're part of the group, they may be, you know, the rate would be better than if they go on individually.
It'll work, it'll be great.
That's what you're sure.
Right.
Cut into their.
Hey, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, so this whole thing becomes a nightmare, though, so I think we need a new sentence, so leave it cut right there. Regular full-time employees are eligible for health and dental, okay. Connington pays the premium for employees, pays a single rate for all regular full-time employees. Okay, so I think at the end of that, we just could add a sentence and say regular part-time part-time employees. Dental, yeah, we're just talking about dental, I guess, here, yep, in the dental insurance or dental benefits, sorry, Lee, I'm just trying to see how it was worded above. At their own, at employees, yeah.
Change that first line under eight point zero point one. I can understand where you got confused. Employees are eligible for health and dental benefits, undercounting contains health insurance plan. Shouldn't it be undercounting contains health and?
Yeah, let, good catch, Cindy.
Just to clarify, because.
Yes, thank you.
Confusing, it looks like the dental is covered under the health by that sentence.
Right, yes, right, thank you, yep. Okay, good job, guys. Any other changes on that, or does that make sense then? Good, okay. On we go, okay, so now you gotta backtrack a little bit to forty-four.
I'm sorry, there's one more sentence in that.
Oh, yeah.
Paragraph, this is Connington pays the premium for an employee's group health and dental, should say pays the single premium. I mean.
Yep.
Pre, I mean, do we need to? Oh wait, nevermind.
Cause the next sentence, it says they pay the single rate.
Right.
Single rate, okay.
For all regular.
All right, so it is.
So it's covered.
Settle page, you think, everything gets so.
We get, you get on.
We need the.
Health and dental. It says health and dental.
Why don't we just delete that sentence above it?
Just delete that sentence.
Yeah.
We need to change that paragraph, because the two-party premium is now split in half. It used to be minus the single, but now it's split in half, if I remember. So that last sentence in that first paragraph is incorrect.
Okay, so let's take the sentence off that Lee just did, and then the next sentence, Connington pays the single rate for the health and dental insurance.
Or.
Like, let's specify that it's those two plans again, right?
Except the health is handled differently than the dental, sorry.
But we still pay a hundred percent of them, right, or no?
We pay a hundred percent of any single coverage.
Right.
And then for the family.
Right, so let's handle the single first.
Okay, alright.
And then, yes, and then we'll go to where you're at.
Okay.
Yep.
Single, the single for health and dental is played, paid completely by the county.
Hundred percent.
For dental, the county pays fifty percent of.
Instead of rate, say premium?
Fifty percent of the family. It's a little.
Okay, as far as the single one, is that sentence correct, county pays single health and dental insurance premiums for all regular full-time.
That's right, right. Okay, so then the next sentence needs to be fixed, you're saying, right, employees wishing to insure spouse or other dependents, the employee pays
One.
One half of the family for health and one half of the family.
Yeah, that's different.
Right, that's wrong.
That's right, you said that's wrong.
Okay, let's fix it then.
And the shift was also wrong.
Okay, what's, what's the correct?
It's complicated.
I think, I think.
The attachment.
It's complicated, well, it's not something I could just.
Can we come back next week?
Yeah, we need to.
And then come back next week and fix this?
Yeah.
Because it's gonna take a little research.
Cindy and go over that.
Or do we just put in there something and see that, oh, I suppose we have to.
Why don't we?
We're gonna have to change this all the time then, if this changes.
Well, no.
I mean, with the insurance, if some of that changes as we go, just like from here to here.
Depending on which option a family or an employee chooses for the family coverage, the county's payment changes, yeah.
Right, so we're gonna need to.
Yeah.
That's a policy discussion in some ways, because if they pick a certain level of plan, then we'll cover it if they, if they go.
The county will pay the same amount, whether you pick the best plan for the family or the.
So that's, that's a future discussion, too.
Yeah, let's just leave this alone.
Figure out how it works, yeah.
We'll leave it alone for now and get something good that will cover everything and maybe go on in the future, and then we'll come back and do this.
Sounds good. That sounds like Natalie figured this out.
Sorry, Cindy will help me.
So that is that second paragraph there, employees who may choose to opt out of health coverage provided by the county uh, will not be reimbursed monetarily for a portion of, portion of the premium, that is a question that's been going around the counties recently, and it raised a lot of questions on the gallops. We're doing it the correct way.
And they say, yeah, you can't, yeah.
We're doing it the correct way.
You can't give people money, you cannot, it's an whole issue with like taxes.
Not take, yes.
Yep, then they go and they get it.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
Now, I'm gonna throw a wrench into the gear, too.
My rent.
I have dental insurance, but I pay, I pay for it all, I mean, that's. Does that need to be included in there?
You don't, what do you mean, you pay for it all?
I mean.
You give, if you have two party, you pay half of it. County pays the other half.
Yep.
Okay.
That's, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, do we need to put it in policy, so that?
I think that's the part we're trying to figure out how to reword.
But would it include board members?
Yeah, I mean, on the dental.
Oh.
You should.
We need another sentence for.
Do we need to change the, do we need to add something about?
We need something about commissioners, because.
Commissioners, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you don't receive health insurance.
You cannot do the health, but yes, you may have to add commissioners to that dental line, you're correct.
Okay. Well.
County commissioners are, are included in the dental plan or something.
Dental and vision.
That's what he said.
This totally sucks.
It's confusing.
About it, okay. Alright, well, this is gonna take a little work, and then we'll, we'll get it, sorry, figured out, no, it's okay, it's better to get it right.
Yes, exactly.
I just put a note in here with.
Yeah. Right, we'll figure out how to word that, okay.
Save.
Alright, excellent, okay, so forty-four then, page forty-four is seven point one five, travel and reimbursement of expenses. Alright, so this came up as a discussion on our current travel policy and some concerns, and could we make it easier, simplify it? Some concerns as far as like safety and stuff too, for employees that are traveling and specifically from the sheriff's office. So, um, we, what we found out is that there are some counties that they do a blanket approval of travel at the beginning of the year. And so they don't have to handle them individually as they come up, and so that's kind of what this is trying to reword. And then we have some examples from the other counties that do it as far as how they word that motion and.
So any travel that is not on that list, then they need to come and get approval. Otherwise, basically, we're kind of approving the travel in the budget, so then it's kind of redundant that they gotta keep coming back for some of these things. So the only travel we would be then coming in front of us would be those that are not listed.
So we do, at the beginning of the time period, we do like a Tuesday, okay, so.
Conferences.
Yeah, so we'd say, we'd send an email to department heads and say, what do you plan on going to this year? And probably most of it's the same, and we don't need like the specific dates, but like, I'm gonna attend the.
General.
Just get a list of events.
Whatever.
And then when they add, when they add to that event, then they, then they have to come suffer like they have been, okay.
That way we won't have all the travel requests coming back to us.
So it's gotta be covered in that travel line of the budget, though.
Yes.
So that, that, that gets to be a problem, I might have to come back to this.
Right, right.
Right.
Okay.
It's a lot more efficient, yeah.
Next section then. Scrolling on my tab, sorry, here. Alright, page fifty-eight, holidays, no, sorry, funeral leave first. Kidding, eight point one zero funeral leave. Um, so this has come up, and it's just a clarification, and really, the intention is really not to eliminate um, or reduce anything that was, I think, the intention of the policy. But the way it was worded, it caused confusion when the highway department works their four-ten's is really when this kind of came up, so the, the way it was worded, it was just said, you know, it could be granted up to five days off. And so the clarification on it is that it's a maximum of forty hours, so if the highway department is working four-ten's, they don't technically get fifty hours, like five full days, they get forty hours, which is what they're working. So then all the hours were just added in, and again, I think that was the intention of the policy, I don't think we're taking anything away. It's just clarification when schedules change in other departments.
I like it.
So it looked right? Did I do my math right on the hours?
Yeah.
Okay, so then the next section is on holidays, so we added Juneteenth, as we know that was declared a holiday last year. And then there's a discussion on how we wanna handle, you know, the rest of it, so this came up. We added the language, which we had actually added to the union contract, if it is proclaimed less than ten, that looks weird, but I think it's supposed to be ten, that must have been a copy paste thing. Working days, then it will not be observed until the next year, but then there, you know, I guess was the discussion about taking the president off. Do you wanna do anything different with this, do you wanna leave it like it is? We did have the discussion that maybe we, you know, take off anything from the governor as well and just add in days that we know we want to give, and so we state them specifically. Or we can leave it like it is.
I kinda, I kinda like this wording, I, I guess I have a slight preference to just kind of list the holidays. I'm good either way, but I, I think most, in most cases, this will be fine, I can't imagine the governor. You know, because the governor's just gonna, may or may not do what the president says, I mean, in this case, in the case of Juneteenth, she did. And then, but that, that, because, because at the federal level, it was very short notice. And it was very short notice for counties where the road meets the road, where you're serving the public, so it's a little easier at the state level. So that's, that, I think that ten, ten working days is pretty, that's kind of the key, I mean, that's the issue.
Gives us time to act on it, which we didn't have.
No, because.
Before.
So with that, though, like what just happened over the, is, would this not even be the same, like?
It's not the same, because your policy currently says all other days is declared by the governor.
Right.
But this would still say that.
Yeah, it does that, but then it gives us ten days on short notice occasions, which is what we had to deal with for Juneteenth.
And that's more on the federal. But Juneteenth was a brand new.
Yeah, and that's, that's the thing.
But with no notice, I had.
They declared that like a day or two before the actual.
If that.
Not a week, it was a week, it was just a week, normally we hear like three weeks ahead.
Yeah.
But there's like Christmas, so yeah, so Christmas Eve, they ended up getting half a day from the governor this year, but I don't know that she declared it ten days in advance.
It wasn't.
So that would, they would have been open then.
So that's what I wondered then, if we specifically say ten days, and if she does that again, and it's not ten days, then we not going to allow that.
Right, which is why you might, I mean, so you have a couple, I guess, options, you could leave and I, you know, looking at, we wanna be fair to employees and that kind of thing, you could leave it as the governor declares and roll the dice that she might declare more, and employees get more holidays, or she might.
Can we put a line in there that says, or at the discretion of the county commission?
I'm, I'm gonna guess that the days that the governor would declare would be at Easter, at Christmas.
Right.
And the day after Thanksgiving.
And so that's the other thing we could do with the policy, would be why not just add those days, take the governor out of it, people know they can plan.
Like in this instance, we would have had all day off Christmas Eve anyway, because Christmas Day fell on Saturday.
Right, but it was the twenty-third that was the question.
It was the twenty-third, right, and it was a week ahead of time.
Yeah.
So then they wouldn't have been allowed, if we have that in there, then they wouldn't have been allowed to take that, get that half day, the way the governor said it, but it wasn't ten days.
Right, so I mean, your other option is, like, if you wanna provide, I mean, you might end up with less days if she declares more that you don't give, but on the other hand, it provides employees notice of what they get, you could just add in, we're gonna say, we're gonna add Christmas Eve. We're gonna do the day after Thanksgiving, and we're going to do half a day or a full day on Good Friday or Easter Monday. And then employees can plan accordingly, and the public can plan accordingly, and they're not wondering if the process is open.
I think either way, it'd be appropriate to just go ahead and add those to our list, and then, then, and you could still even leave the verbiage above the governor. Because it's gonna be rare, she'll probably add those days anyway, and then, okay, there might be something out there that happens, you know, I don't know what it would be, but, but that, you know, we, we still have that ten, you know, I.
Well, maybe you change it to seven, if she was seven days, if it's gonna get that close, maybe the number changes.
I, I kinda like the ten days myself, but, but I think it is good, either way, whether we take that out or leave it in, I think it's good to add those days.
Just add the other holidays that your intention is to give them.
Yeah, but I mean, seven days would be okay, too, I mean, I think it's more dependent on, you know, the people, the department heads, you know, what do they, what do they think? They have probably the best perception of.
Speak for all department heads.
Well, the question is seven or ten, seven days or ten days?
Oh, seven or ten, um, you move it to ten, you might miss one of these meetings if the board has to take action on it. I guess I don't know what your tensions are exactly, are you, are you gonna?
Well, we wanna.
Take action, because if you move it to ten days, you might miss the window of opportunity, so that's why seven would be better.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, you know, I.
I, I'm, I'm okay with that. I mean, the thing is-
Let's go with seven.
Yeah.
I like seven.
Okay.
Times is-
Do you want to um, add in though, like Christmas Eve or the day after Thanksgiving? So we add those as stated holidays?
Right, and then Easter Monday.
Do you want Easter Monday, Good Friday, half a day, full day? What do you wanna do?
In the last few years, the governor has declared all day Good Friday and all day Easter Monday. I, I've, just for the last several years, she's done that. I don't know if she'll continue. I mean, it's-
And if it's a new governor, we don't know. So maybe we need those and we can decide that, right? If she, if the governor does it, if it's within that seven days, we could, that would fall under that then.
Right, so pick one and then if she adds the other, then that would fall under this and you'd get it.
Exactly. So I think we wanna try to catch all this stuff ahead of time, so we can plan for it as best-
So Good Friday is the day that people would be attending church services.
Okay.
Easter Monday, there's no church services.
So Good Friday would be the better?
Would be the-
People like a Friday weekend too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Full day or half day.
Half day for Good Friday.
And then if she declares it within seven days, we can, it would, we would, it would fall within that window. So if we start out with half day.
Half day, Good Friday, full day, Christmas Eve?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the full day after Thanksgiving are the three we're adding and leaving it governor and changing it to seven, not ten. Is that right?
Yep. Thanks.
Okay, all right. And just when you thought we were done, we're not. Okay, next page, sixty-six, sixty-seven. Removing the grievance procedures. What's the number? Oh, sorry, twelve point oh. This is a recommendation as well and the SCPAA has recommended that no proceed, grievance procedures are included. State not law no longer requires a city county to have a grievance procedure in place for non-union employees. It'll have to stay in the union contracts um, to avoid later legal issues. Recommended you do not include a grievance procedure for non-union employees. So that is what they said, so I struck it out of here.
So that's sixty-seven, sorry.
Uh, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight.
I think Christmas Eve was full day.
It's what?
Wasn't it fall, Christmas Eve?
Oh, fall, okay, okay.
I've got no, it's okay.
I'm just trying to-
So any questions on that, concerns? Do you wanna leave it in? Are you okay with removing it per their recommendation?
Well, if it's handled through the unions, I guess, I don't know why it would need to stay in. Isn't it better?
Yeah, there's a, that'll be in the union contract separately.
Right.
But, okay, so, and it's, how does this affect none, this is only reference, union employees or?
Non-union, so the union, it would stay in their contract.
Right, so and what, what, what's the reasoning with this? I understand the insurance is telling us not to do it, but recommends removing this, but-
I believe in case you don't follow it, as it says.
Okay, okay. So it doesn't mean you still don't, employees still talk to their, their supervisor.
Definitely.
Yeah, they still, they still have access to all, you know, commissioners.
Yes.
There's a process, it's just-
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I think the formal way this is written, very formally.
Very rigid.
Very rigid.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Okay, um, so then I think the last thing I have for you is the compensation section. So this is revised as per our-
Is that in this, in this document or set of-
Page seventy, yep, appendix A, sorry. As a result of our compensation study, we needed to make some updates to this. And so that is what is all reflected here. It's a, I, yeah, trying to think what was all changed, but basically it's a twelve-step system instead of a fourteen-step system. So that's just a clarification. Confirmed what they can hire at, at the hiring level. So they could hire somebody up to a step four. If it's above a step four, they would need to come to you for approval. I mean, they have to get your approval ultimately anyway. But um, previously, there was a whole section in there that they would, if they hired at a step one and if they were, had satisfactory performance for six months, they would automatically move to a step two. So that has been removed based on the new scale. We don't need to make that move within six months. Um, annual step increase still happens with acceptable performance. And we're moving that timeframe, of course, to doing those in July. Um, we did have to decide what we wanted to do with like new hires, when they would be eligible for their step increase. So we're gonna do step increases in July, right? So then that means like, if you were hired this year before July, am I eligible for my step when we made step increases in July? And so this is um, Dr. McGrath's recommendation was that we would leave it. Um, if they were hired within three months, that they would not receive it. So somebody that was hired in January of this year, when we go to do July step increases, would get a step. But if they were hired in June, they would not.
Yeah.
Which I think makes sense. Um, the other thing we had to make a change too was when we were going to handle, how we were gonna handle part-time employees. So previously in your policy, um, payroll would keep track of how many hours they accrued. And when they hit that two thousand eighty-eight mark, they would get their step. And so rather than doing that, now we're just looking and saying, in the previous twelve months, we go to do steps in July. Did they, did they hit nine hundred hours? And if they hit nine hundred hours, then they would get a step. And that was Dr. McGrath's recommendation um, on number of hours. If they didn't, then they would not keep accruing, it would start over. So like, if you go and look back and say, okay, you only had five hundred hours, you don't get it this year. You start the clock over and see how you do for the next year for your step. Rather than trying to keep it running total. And then there's just a bunch of other stuff that could be cut because I really don't think it applies to just the wording, the way it was now with what we have, the, it's the same, like exempt, non-exempt, blah, blah, blah.
There's a thing of promotions.
There is a promotion section, yep, and that was um, what would happen if you moved to a different position? And you were already, so you got, took a promotion, but you were already making more. Um, you would still get an increase basically for taking that new position, so.
Yeah, so you don't wanna get-
Basically like, yeah, we don't want you to get paid less for taking a promotion.
Yeah, you're not gonna have anybody wanting to-
No, or else you'd have nobody wanting to take a promotion.
I think these changes sound good, but you, there is that one section on insurance, you guys think that?
Yeah, so I will, so I don't think you need to vote on anything then today. Um, I think we just had good discussions. So I will come back, ask about life insurance. I'll add the appendix as a waiver. I'll fix the holidays um, section. I'll talk to Cindy about-
Okay, what's the, what's the projected implementa, imple, implementation? Because the union contracts also have holiday language in them.
Yeah, and so we won't be able to change anything with the union contracts. They'll stay as is.
So they will get everything declared by the president or governor without the court's approval.
Yeah.
So that'll be treated differently than the rest of the employees?
Yeah, I don't think it'll happen. Let's just roll, the union contracts are up.
And we have them all being due this year for this very reason, because we knew-
But these run through the end of the year.
Right.
That's my question on the implementation of these, any changes?
Okay, yeah, and if it happens, we'll deal with it.
Okay.
And make an exception or something.
Because we can always, yeah.
Let's hope that they don't come up with some new holidays that we need.
No, no, I'm just thinking of the ones-
The union contracts run on the calendar year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're talking about July one, that's a lot of this stuff here.
Well, maybe even before. I mean, whenever we get it, you know, it could be sooner than that, so. But yes, we'll just have to address that.
So do you want, the only thing, so we'll revise this and whatever, but the only thing that would like be a question involving employees. Do you want them, do you wanna do the change with the travel? And if so, do you mean to notify them that they need to submit their, what they have planned for the year?
Yes, let's get that.
Okay.
So that we can have that taken care of.
All right. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
Lot of red tape here. I just tried to send-
Red lines, or red lights.
Yeah.
I tried to email it back to you, Natalie, so just let me know.
Item number eighteen, actions to approve claims for payment.
Nothing for eighteen and nineteen, and Iowa superintendent has pulled his travel request for number twenty uh, due to some possible changes in the dates.
Okay, um, I think, okay, is there any old business? I mean, we'll go, okay, any new business?
I don't have any uh, old and new business, but you know, when we were okaying the specs for the highway department, we left out the weed department.
No, that was a part of it.
All your, no, all your, all you approved was a notice to bidders.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all you-
And, and that was included in that. All right, I just wanna make sure that we had it in there.
Yeah.